Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting on Wednesday, January 17th, 2018. This meeting is being recorded. It'll be shown, it's being shown live tonight on Channel 9 and it will be shown throughout the week on Channel 9 also. With that, let's begin with a Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Want a moment of silence for Martha Gordon. She's a neighbor of mine and she was a wonderful person, a great neighbor. She worked at the, at the high school in the special ed department for 20 years and so just so we could have a moment of silence. Our condolences goes to the family. Thank you. Okay. Public input? No?
I, no.
Okay, you don't have to, we just.
Oh, alright, alright. Didn't want you to be disappointed.
I'm always disappointed there's no public input, but that's okay.
Careful what you wish for, right on that one.
Okay. Our town administrators.
Okay, so Sursage Southeastern Regional Services Group, for those who don't know, is a public purchasing consortia made up of 21 local communities. They're contiguous and we abut a couple of communities who are members of that group. We've been invited to join and I've talked about this before. It is a cost savings, what it provides, you know, municipalities the ability to go out together as a group for various services, water and sewer chemicals, DPW services, paper, office supplies, gasoline, many different products. We don't have to do the bids, it's put together by one administrator for all of the towns and vendors like it because they get business with all of the towns so they offer a discounted rate. So that's the premise behind Sursage. Dayton, as I mentioned, has been invited to join. The cost of membership, if we decide to have a membership effective immediately, is a total of $2,050. Annual dues are $4,100 a year. We would be purchasing six months of membership to the group and would be able to receive benefits immediately for paper and W. Mason holds the paper contract and the office supply contract. So I've just written here on your report that for office supplies, it's a 71.4% discount on office supplies. We would be able to purchase, start purchasing that immediately if we voted to join and sent over our payment. Dayton Water District has agreed that they could, they could find some savings in joining and they have agreed to purchase, to contribute 25% of this cost. So the breakdown is for this six months' membership, Dayton Water District would pay $512.50 and this is because, just so the public is aware, the town side would generate a lot more business through Sursage than Dayton Water District. They would really be using it for the chemicals, the water, that one bid. We would be using it for DPW service, I mean, just a wide range. So that's why it's 2575 and our commitment would be $1,537.50. We certainly have this in my budget. I know it's a kind of unexpected cost because it's mid-year, but there is a line in the Selectmen's budget would also cover it. I was unable to verify with the town accountant before she left today, but I can meet with her tomorrow and just verify that.
And just to clarify, it's a one-time, unexpected cost, because going forward.
Right. Going forward, we would budget for it.
Correct.
And going forward, if Dayton Water District, I assume, will, you know, in my conversation with them, they would continue the 25% payment and our commitment would be 3,075. So that's really a drop in the bucket compared to the savings we'd realize, both in time and just management of, of these large procure, procurement projects. Just DPW alone, Tom Ferry, our highway superintendent, has to do a lot of work just to get, you know, curbing materials.
These will probably give us better prices.
They would.
Oh, yeah.
They would. And what I love about Sursage is municipalities retain their flexibility. It's always important to me for us to be able to have our own flexibility. It allows us to learn from maybe some poor experiences that other communities had with a particular vendor that might not have worked out so well. We would know and there would be documentation that we wouldn't have to accept their bid and get a, a lower quality product because we know that they're maybe not the greatest company. So that's always helpful. And if that company happened to be a, the low bidder and we had documented issues with that company, we could provide those documents to the administrator of Sursage and she would provide a separate bid for us. So we wouldn't have to work with that bidder because we had such a poor, you know, if that were the case, we had such a poor experience. So that's attractive. Just because we're in this group doesn't mean we're locked into other people, other vendors. We can still maintain what's the best for Dayton. So I like that.
So I have two questions. My first question is, and I'm literally asking because I didn't, I didn't get a chance to follow up with you, or maybe I did, but I forget. Did sewer, sewer wasn't interested in this at all?
They did not feel that they would use as many, any, really, anything. I mean, what are they going to use, a ream of paper?
Yeah.
That's not, a box of paper, excuse me. So that it's not worth it for them to put in a significant amount. They might change their mind, but they're not buying sewer chemicals, they're not. So they declined and again, if that changes, you know, I'm right up there.
Yep.
So if they think that they can get a benefit, you know, I was just going to say it's one Dayton, it's under one umbrella.
Oh, okay.
Can we get the school involved with this? I know it's short notice.
So I did ask the school, they're interested. It's just tricky because Rehoboth is not a member, refused, not refused, but did not go to the open house that we were invited to. Rehoboth chose not to go. So how do they divvy up purchasing? But again, at a later date, they can join in.
That's something maybe we could discuss next year, when we have more time to maybe plan that part with Rehoboth as well, if they're even interested.
If they're interested. And the, the three spring procurements that are coming up that we'd be participating in are paper, DPW services and water sewer treatment chemicals. So it's really something that's outside this, what would the school would use, maybe paper.
Paper.
So that's just kind of a discussion for future use, but they would be interested in it and, you know, they'd be welcome to. It's under Dayton, they would qualify.
My other question is, I apologize for being long-winded.
No, I don't. Please don't apologize.
I see here for membership that we, number two says to provide an authorized certified procurement officer delegation form. My question is, when do we have to act on this and when do we have to act if we're going to on assigning a chief procurement officer?
Okay. So that's actually on your agenda later, under Old Business, item A. They would, to join Sursage now, they would need a designated chief procurement officer. This is the individual that would go to their meetings. This is the individual that would be the liaison. So any paperwork would funnel through, make sure that the Selectmen are signed, the board signs off on the contract, then we send it back. We provide, part of the town's duty in procuring is to give an estimate of what we're going to use. So we need 500 boxes of paper in a year. I'm just throwing that out there, I have no idea what the real numbers. So we need to provide that so that they have an accurate estimate for, for bidding purposes and the vendor knows what, what they could expect in the future year. So that would be the chief procurement officer's role in Sursage specifically and then, of course, keeping any documents, like if we had a bad experience with a vendor, keeping any of those documents to make sure that nothing, exactly.
In case something comes up.
And make sure that we have it, that we'll not use them again.
Sure. So my, I guess my, I should have tidied it up a little bit better. My question is, do we need to act on Sursage tonight and if we do, we also need to act on the chief procurement officer as part of becoming a member of this?
Correct. So we need to act on Sursage, it depends. If you want six months of membership and to start tomorrow, enjoying benefits of lower paper supplies and lower office supplies, we have to act tonight. If you'd like to, and that was kind of a bonus, I didn't think we could, that was a bonus to us. If we wanted to just participate in these paper services, DPW services and water sewer treatment chemicals, we would just need our membership effective March. That would lower this cost here on the first block, obviously, because you wouldn't be paying for six months of, of membership, it would be four, or three.
Seems to me we ought to get into it right away.
Yeah. Thank you for that, I'm sorry I wasn't clear.
Absolutely, no, don't apologize.
Any other questions for, about this?
Not about Sursage, no.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Do we have to, do we have to do this piece, me?
What do you mean? The procurement?
You wrote the confirmation that we're going to.
Oh, this is just me telling you exactly what, I, we take care of that.
Is that the process for each time you go out?
Right. I just wanted to demonstrate what the town would have to do and your procurement officer does this. So that's confirming, yes, we want to participate in the gasoline bid, just throwing that out there.
Okay, but, so the vote that we need is for Dayton to join the Southeast.
Join Sursage, yep.
Okay.
And the, a second vote would be to designate your chief procurement officer. So that's all you would need to do right now. Everything else would come later.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that the town join SERSG for the six-month period ending June 30th, 2018.
Second.
Oh, and at a cost of?
Oh, yeah.
2,050 total and the town's commitment is 1,537.
At a total cost of 2,050 with the town of Dayton paying 1,537.50.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good work.
Thank you very much. I think you'll, the town will, and your department heads will, will enjoy a lot of, I think Karen too, enjoying a lot of time savings.
As long as we get some better paper.
Better quality.
Oh, okay. MMA Annual Meeting, this is just to let everybody know that we have a little contingency from Dayton going to the annual meeting, which is on Friday. There's various workshops, it's the opportunity for us to network and all of us are going and a couple of other, other department heads and I think it'll be a good time. We'll divvy up our time and go to different workshops and get everything we need to know.
Absolutely.
Next on my list is the Community Compact IT Grant. We received this via email. I'm still working on this password business. I've, I've reached out, I, I don't know, you know, I gave him a week and he hasn't given it. I don't know if you had the opportunity to look through.
Is the?
Why don't you explain what you're talking about?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The password, is it one password for the town forever and ever?
I don't know. It just, it, it said that we were given, we, the town, were given a password on August 15th.
Right. And I gave that to Grant King at Serpents. So if you want to get in touch with Grant King, ask him what the password was. I can go back and look through my stuff, but.
They're very, he'll be very helpful.
Let's explain what you're talking about.
Okay, so the Community Compact is a partnership between local governments and the state. This particular opportunity is for IT capability. It's up to $200,000 and I couldn't really do too much more investigating into it because I didn't have this password, but I need this password in order to apply. And why it's on here is we need to decide what we're going to go after for this grant. So that's why it's on here for your discussion. If we want to just mull it over and make a decision next week, obviously that's okay, but we need to start putting together our application. They're accepting them now.
Do you have thoughts about what we should go for?
Well, I did have thoughts. They really rela, circled around kind of a fiber optic capability, but after our meeting today, we had a meeting today for the cable contract license renewal that's coming up in 2020 and have some positive feedback about fiber optic lines being paid for through this contract. So I kind of don't want to waste the opportunity.
We could use this maybe on cybersecurity or, right?
Right, something. So I just, I wanted it on here so that all of you could weigh in and, and basically give us some ideas. We can investigate everything that you come forward with and then put together, maybe, you know, I, again, I wasn't able to look onto the application because maybe there's three different priorities we could put in.
So you'll, you'll get the application this week and then maybe next week we can talk more detail about it.
Right. Or if all of you can think about, you know, what you'd like to see. I have somebody else, maybe if, if the fire department, he was in here, if, if we could use this to bolster what he has for communications, something like that. But I, I wanted the opportunity for everybody to.
I was thinking also, other offices use, in-town office, in this building use Vadar, so they might have.
That's actually, I'm glad you just brought that up, that actually is, who partners with this grant. Also, I'd like to point out and, and I'd like to thank my colleagues, the reason why this, we're even eligible to even think about applying for this grant is because we're part of the Community Compact Cabinet. So that's a really big thing, so we don't want to forget that. But yeah, this is through Vadar and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, so I can go like the, Board of Assessors Office uses some software through Vadar, so we're already kind of familiar with that.
I'm thinking Mary does too.
Probably, yeah.
A collector.
Mary and Carol.
She does. And.
You know what might be a good idea?
You know who doesn't, is the sewer commission.
Yes.
And it would be nice to bring them in, but the cost was not, it wasn't cost-effective for the sewer commission to do it on their own, but it would be helpful for Mary.
If you get a grant, yeah.
Because she can send everything out at the same time.
And have everybody on the same system.
Right.
And during audits, they have been, there has been comments made that they should have a compatible system and not be on their own.
Exactly.
So maybe that's actually a great, and it's not, it wasn't that much.
No. They, they tried to do that last year in the budget, but the sewer department, they didn't, they didn't feel it made, made sense for them.
Right.
Made sense for Mary. So I, I assume you're probably going to do this, but probably talk to all the department heads. Maybe I'm being all departments, the brains, to see what they're interested in.
Yeah, maybe, you might find you even have another department who might be interested that maybe, I don't know, never thought about it before.
Thank you very much, okay.
No, thank you.
So that's an opportunity. I'll be back next week for that.
Also, we could speak to, they're actually at the MMA conference.
They are.
So we could actually drop by the booth and.
I plan on it.
Get some background knowledge.
They gave us their booth number, so we'll be over there stopping by. And at the last meeting, we talked about sending out correspondence to all of our committees, about giving us an update. I just want to let you know that's been done, the help of Karen. We sent out a memo, we've already received a couple back. My plans for this, above and beyond providing this opportunity, you know, this update for the public and for you, is I'd like to compile this and make this a book, you know, so people know every committee's statutory authority, you know, does, was it, was it developed as ad hoc, was it developed through town meeting, how many members does it have, all that kind of stuff that you would ever need to know about your committee. So that's where we're going with that. It's, you know, work in progress, but we sent it out.
I think that would also boost, like, participation because I feel like part of the reason why you don't, we don't get people to apply isn't because people aren't interested. I think it's genuinely because, like, in the case of Open Space Committee, it's clear what that committee does, but like Land Use Committee, like, I wouldn't immediately know from that name what they do. So I really think having, like, mission statements.
Absolutely.
I think in having it on the website and then, you know, people know what they're applying for.
Exactly.
I also think seeing a live body that chairs the committee or the committee members can make an impact. Because I, actually, I went to the Open Space Committee a little bit today and I was talking about that and, and so they could put something together. And the other thing I think too is, you know, when I talk to you open space, we've always had this problem that we have these committees that are kind of doing their own thing in, like, land use, open space, drawn up like, anyway.
Conservation.
Conservation. They all really relate to each other, so we want to try and coordinate that, and you'll know with, with stuff you're doing.
Right. You can corral them, you know. So that's good. So that's working, that's a work in progress. We've already gotten a couple.
Good.
That's good, a week later.
I just want to say that I think Mallory is doing a wonderful job here.
Oh, thank you.
She's getting it, she's getting it organized. She knows more about town government than any of us will ever know and so I think it's, it's wonderful, so appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. I don't know, Selectmen Gulart's got a pretty good advantage on town government.
Absolutely. That's my go-to.
It was a reminder to me last night at the budget meeting at DR and it was this preface and I looked at Swartz and I says, "Did you just tell me I'm the oldest one in the room?"
Okay.
So this is the chief procurement officer. So since we did just join Sursage and I thank you for that, we do need to determine a chief procurement officer. As I understand it, the town has a chief procurement liaison, which is a role being fulfilled by the town accountant right now. We just need to assign that. In all the paperwork, when I was being hired, it made mention that the town administrator would be the chief procurement officer. So in all honesty, I was actually expecting that designation. To me, it makes sense and the town accountant function is a check on the procurement function, which is healthy government.
Why is, why are they requiring certification? You don't have it.
I don't have certification, but I need to be delegated in order, delegated as the chief procurement officer in order to actually enroll for my MCPPO designation.
Oh, okay. Oh, they won't even let you?
Well, you can get these different levels, but what use is that if I eventually need to be the full designation? I need to, I need to be.
Okay, so we are not providing a certified procurement officer.
Well, I wouldn't be certified by the inspector general, but her, so Maura Rouse is the administrator for Sursage. Her documentation specifically says it shouldn't be the town accountant because of the check.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying.
I know. She's certified, she's the only individual certified.
The procurement officer in the town of Dayton is the chairman of the Board of Selectment period. He's not certified and neither were the previous ones, that's why she got certified.
Exactly.
So what I'm saying is, why is the word certified in here since the person with the certification is a liaison and not the certified person? Does the person have to be certified?
A chief procurement officer needs to be certified, but I ca, it's chicken and egg. I can't get certified if I'm not.
No, it's not my question.
An individual cannot be certified until they've been delegated the function and then they can enroll in the certification.
No, no, not what I'm saying. The chief procurement officer in the town of Dayton is the chairman of Board of Selectmen and it was previously.
Okay.
But the chairman is not certified. So the Board of Selectmen back before said, "We'll get the town accountant certified and she will be the liaison." So my question to you is, why does this still say certified since she can't do it because of her role? Chairman of the Board of Selectmen is not certified and neither are you at this point. All I'm questioning is the word certified, that's the problem.
So that came from, that came from Sursage. They expect, they being the state, expect that a town's chief procurement officer will become certified. The process to do that is through the inspector general's office. I can't, an individual has to be delegated the role by the Board of Selectmen in order to get that certification. So this is the first start.
No, we, we're missing the point here.
Oh, I understand.
The Board of Selectmen delegated her to become the liaison.
Yes.
All right, so what I'm saying to you is, check with whoever. Can you be named without the word certified? I know you're going to do the work, I know you're going to move forward. The current procurement officer and the previous one were not certified. So that hasn't changed. All I'm questioning is, I don't know how we could appoint a certified procurement officer or give somebody certified delegation when they don't have it. I have no problem naming you as procurement officer.
You're right, and you can.
But we're not, we're not appointing a certified procurement officer, we would be assigning a chief procurement officer who would be getting certified, right?
And this, this is language that came from Sursage, so.
So can we get rid of the word certified?
Sure, of course we can.
Yeah, but let me ask the question because it says, "Provide authorized certified officer delegation form."
That's a, that's the title of the form.
I know.
That's just the paper.
I, I understand that, yeah. But does that, by doing, submitting that form, that gives you the ability to get certified?
Correct. It gives me the ability to participate in Sursage.
That's right.
It begins me to, it allows me to act on behalf of the town in procuring contracts and it sets the ball in motion.
So.
To answer your question, yes, certified can be.
If we vote to delegate you procurement officer, leave the word certified out. Is that going to be a problem until you get certified? That's all I'm saying to you is, we can't delegate you certified because you're not certified.
Correct.
And that was exactly why the previous boards couldn't do it for the chairman. So we have a liaison, so can we make a motion to appoint you, to delegate you procurement officer for the town of Dayton? Is that going to be sufficient?
I believe so.
Why don't we do that?
I think there might be, I think you should do that.
Why don't we do that and then you can research it further?
That makes sense. There might be some legal thing, but I think it's fine.
There had to be a way to do it.
Before.
To get Jen appointed liaison, so this has got to be a way.
I think the lingo has always just been CPO, Certified Procurement Officer, so I think that's where it comes from.
So why don't we?
I'm 98% sure that it's fine.
I'll entertain a motion to.
I'm going to make a motion to appoint, excuse me, I'm going to make a motion to delegate Mallory Ehrenstein, procurement officer for the town of Dayton.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'm not sure why delegate, why not appoint? Because when, what do we delegate?
Well, I'm only reading what I've got.
Yeah, it's just.
It's, it's.
You're tasking that person with the job, is what that means.
That's acceptable, everybody, I'm fine.
Yeah, I just, I saw.
If you find out we can't use delegate and yet the form is delegate, just tell us the proper wording and we'll, we'll vote it.
That's just the title of the form.
Right.
Okay.
That's what I'm.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
What's number three, the authorized special municipal employee form?
Honestly, I think that's something through her, Maura's role, I have it on.
Because we do, we do delegate special municip, as, we are special municipal employees as Selectmen with our other duties.
Right, absolutely. So this is, this is the form, if you want to take a look at it. It's just paperwork. I was just trying to show, I guess I complicated things by including that. I was just trying to show what our process is and, and what it takes to join. It's simple, it's paperwork.
I think we're good to go at this point.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's this paragraph that explains what it is.
So, yeah, let's move on to the next, how to adopt the Selectmen Meeting Agenda Policy. We've had our three readings. We've had, I don't think we've had any input.
No additional comments.
Since the readings.
Since the readings. And this is, you've all approved it at this, or excuse me, reviewed it and now it's just time to approve and sign and this would be an effective policy as of this state.
Yep.
All right.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen Meeting Agenda Policy.
As written.
As written.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Great, thank you.
So say we all.
So say we all. Okay. Next item is to adopt, uh, to adopt the town administrator job description. So we've all, we took it under advisement the last time, at the last meeting, so I've read it, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. So.
Can you wait one second? I, I don't have that.
Sure.
Give me one, I'm sorry.
I don't know if you included it again.
See, this doesn't require a certified either. It's just chief procurement, so I think, I don't think we need the word certified.
I don't think so either.
Oh, okay.
I think what you said is probably.
And that's, I'm like, remembering, there's various levels of certification, obviously I'd like the top, you know, but it just makes sense to get in the pipe. And laws have changed in the last three years, especially.
I think it's probably what you said, it's just kind of like the term that everybody uses.
It's the word, yeah. You know, when she emailed that to me, she probably has boilerplate language that she sends to her new communities, so.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Well, before we, I want to, did we, did any of this language change from the fifth bullet point down?
I did not make any changes from the last submission, I guess, because I had not received any, anything. So I just kept it as is.
So it's the same thing we saw last week?
Correct. However, last week it was the first, I mean, you had just gotten it.
I know, right. I did, right. I had a chance to read it.
Was all, was all that duplicated stuff left in there?
No. There was a couple of things I took out per your recommendation. Some things I did leave in because I felt they should be in there. Most of this, I'll just reiterate, was what went out in your posting. I didn't take too much.
The problem with that was it was boilerplate and everybody in their grammar that they, they are hired to represent sees the same stuff. And my point was that a job description for a local community should reflect more of that community and less of the boilerplate.
I think, I mean, my feeling is that it does. I, I think, you know, it's.
Just like we do for our police and fire chief, when we come right down to talking about duties, every little town has a, all the standard, but then you have little extra things that turn up.
Yeah, I'm good. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the town administrator job description as prepared.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor, say aye. Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Mallory.
Thank you. Okay, CGE engineering proposal. Mr. McGee, the chairman of the police building, did speak with the project manager on this, straightened it out, put in a new letter, which you have here tonight. There's a cap on it. Slack McGoolart raised many good points at the last meeting. And one of those points was the cap, capping the amount to be expended. It's five thousand dollars. Mr. McGee also told me that this money has already been factored into a budget. This is not an additional five thousand to the project. This has already been.
This is just specifying that it could go towards this?
To five thousand and then anything future. So this is testing soil. That's what this is all about.
It's not concrete.
It's not concrete. It's soil. And they have to test it for various points and retest if something comes up in the original test. So that's what this is. It's capped at five thousand and then we'll just always keep in touch with Mr. McGee when anything comes forward. But he is very much cued in to his project. So he's done a great job and I thank him. And he was right on top of this.
As always.
As always, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for professional geo- for professional geotechnical engineering services from CGE Engineering for soil testing up to five thousand dollars.
And you want to also include authority to sign it?
Oh, it's just you? I don't think she was, I don't think we were aware.
Yeah, just that, that way to do it.
Oh, okay, so up to five thousand dollars and give the chairman of the board permission to sign this agreement. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, new business. The anti-
Anti-harassment.
I'll be honest with you, they haven't had a chance to read.
Yeah, it's very long.
Very long, right.
A lot of legalese and it, yeah, that's, that's, I really, I just finished this today. I don't expect you.
So we should take it under advisement.
In advisement, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take the anti-harassment policy under advisement.
Second.
Okay, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I will just say that, just as a background, I compiled this out of, I used three different towns anti-harassment policies and compiled this. It came from Westford, West Bridgewater, and Carver. Just as a background, okay.
Tell us who you are. We know who you are, but.
Yes, the public. Tom Burkmann, Montess Hill Drive, oh, if you need the address. Thirty seventy six. Stop by anytime. Alright, uh, it's funny. Don't show up at my house. Yeah, I was here last weekend. I, it's just, it's not a criticism of anything. It's just maybe a positive thing I was thinking about. When we, when I worked for the fire department and they had to come up with some programs and they tapped into the state, those state entities that look into stuff like that. Would that include education for employees? Not just a policy be put out, but would there be money from the state to help you educate your people, our people?
Well, I think it depends on what it is.
In other words, on harassment?
On harassment. There's actually, I know that you have in redacts, it's very long. There's a provision in here that says that the town will provide training.
Right.
I think I added the word regular. Provide training to employees. There are groups from the state that provide that. There are groups from insurance agencies that provide that. So, yes.
And one other thing I was curious about, because I've seen this in the past, I'm not saying here. HIPAA. You know, your HIPAA laws, I mean, even though we're, we're all bound to this in these municipalities and state federal, whatever. HIPAA education. So I mean, I don't know if that's part of this thing that's coming down.
That would be separate. That's, this is anti-harassment. So it encompasses prohibited harassment protected by law and sexual harassment together. HIPAA wouldn't, I mean, disability, but.
HIPAA's about medical.
HIPAA's like health information in that it's private.
In other words, if the town handles billing through insurance, that's HIPAA.
Correct.
Correct.
Remember, like the veterans agent has his own laws, alright? That's all. I'm just wondering.
Mr. Burkmann, what we've done in the past, because of this situation we've been dealing with for a few years relative to the ambulance billing account, what we've done is, what has been provided to us way back, what had names on it, when I gave that to the fire chief that had been reconciled, what came back was, all the names were blanked out. And anything with names, once he reconciled, because there were, there were run numbers too, so that's your ID number. The name, the documents that had names were shredded. They were destroyed. So, again, what we saw was a blank column. That's what we reconciled to. And that's what went on to the town accountant so that this, this is not around. And when Mr., when Chief McGee does his next round, what will come in for me to look at is just gonna be a big blank area with case numbers, because case numbers are the ID, so we have.
I heard you mention that before when we were talking about that with the chief and the other team. But I do understand that it was kinda like mid EMS coordinator I was still working. And they brought that HIPAA, they just got introduced, because I'm kinda from the old team. But it was just coming out and we had to figure out where we were gonna have the stuff locked up, the files. It was like, oh my God, you know? So it is, it's something, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we designate the town administrator to the Southeastern Massachusetts Health Group Board as an alternate member.
This is a, the treasurer asked me to accompany her to these meetings and be designated as an alternate so that I could attend. This is just municipalities exploring health insurance. As everyone knows, health insurance costs are exorbitant and municipalities are faced with a lot of different decisions about health insurance. So she asked me to just accompany her with her and as she's asked for this designation.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I move that Mallory Ehrenstein be appointed alternate member to the Southeast Eastern Massachusetts Health Group Board as requested by the town treasurer.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'd just like to make another recommendation and, and I'm literally, just after town administrator Ehrenstein explained it, it dawned on me. I think we should also consider appointing her to the insurance advisory committee too. I know they're not like active right now, but they, you know, they were very active, you know, a couple months ago, so it might be worth appointing you to that for, you know, in the future as well.
I'm trying to, before we do that, would you please check with Mary Hathaway because I know when, there were two committees that had to be, the insurance advisory committee is the one that's always around. And I know that the, each union has to be represented, which we had. But then, when we had to get into the discussion of the next step, which involved that the increase in premiums and the mitigation and how we were gonna handle the, the holiday
Right.
premiums and all that, I know they asked me to come into that meeting. So, ask, if you would check with Mary and find out how that would work, because obviously, I think somebody from the selectmen's office needs to be on it.
This is outside of the health insurance advisory committee. This is a second one?
Well, it was, it was formed because of the legislation that said we would, we would, if we accepted those sections, there would be this mitigation fund, so forth and so on. And then, when we went to town meeting, we had to get all of that approved, which we did. That may not come up again under that law that we accepted, but I'm, I'm not, as I say, I hadn't been involved until they asked me to get involved and I presented it at a town meeting, so I'm really not sure.
I'll find out. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll do that next, next meeting, I guess. Okay, any correspondence?
No correspondence.
It's like the third week, nobody's written us.
How about announcements? Go for it.
Trash bags, sharps, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the board of selectmen's office. Please call five zero eight six six nine six four three one for more information. There are vacancies on the open space committee, historical commission, land use committee, and capital outlay committee. So if you're interested, you can either come to town hall and get the paper volunteer application form or, this is the best way, you could just fill out the electronic volunteer form on the website and indicate which committee you'd like to.
And I know a lot, a lot of people answered the questionnaire that went out from the open space committee and there was several people that showed an interest in belonging, in getting on that committee, so if you're one of those people, I think they might contact you, but in the meantime, if you're one of those people, I want you to sign up, because they need some help down there. It's a great committee.
How many members on that one?
I don't know.
Six right now, I think.
How many seats on that?
Five.
I think there's five, but I, but I don't think.
We'll know once we get our committee update.
I don't believe there's any statutory limit on how many people you can.
I don't think that's like, you know, like the development industrial commission can have like nine, yeah, they could have. But that was an authority given, you know, in that specific MGL. I think that open space committee is something that the town has created, like just like our green communities committee. You can have as many people as you want.
It's actually a subcommittee of the planning board is what, how it sits, so. It's a great.
But not really, because you have completely different members, so.
No, no, I know, I know, but.
The board appoints them, like the board of selectmen, not the planning.
But that's how it's been looked at, but anyway.
Oh, like coming under the, I see.
They work together.
Yeah, well, they have to, for sure.
Senator Mark Pacheco is holding an upcoming senior health and wellness fair. Representatives from state and local senior agencies will be in attendance to provide information on senior health programs, benefits, and wellness activities. Blood pressure, glucose screenings, and flu shots will be offered. The date is Friday, January nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, from ten AM to four PM at Middleborough Town Hall, Ten Nickerson Avenue, Middleborough, Massachusetts, zero two three four six. To confirm attendance, please call Senator Pacheco's district office at five zero eight eight two two three thousand. Dog licenses are available. Massachusetts general law requires that all dogs six months of age or older be licensed. Applications were included with your census. Please complete and return your census, even if no changes are necessary. For assistance, please call the town clerk's office at five zero eight six six nine five four one one, option three, for more information.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, selectmen reports.
Oh, yeah, I got, I'll do the, the health fair that, that my colleague just mentioned. There was one in Taunton yesterday from ten AM to four PM. And when I got back to Taunton, it was probably one fifteen, one thirty, I stopped in to see what was going on. At that point in time, they had done most of the speeches, but there were still tables with information, various organizations. I think I hit every table except the AARP. And I was able to get.
Don't mind you.
I'm a member, so they send all this junk to me. So, I was able to get a good handful of material for veterans' benefits. The city of Taunton's veterans' agent was there. And there were a lot of resources and books that I had not seen before, so I picked them up and I gave them to our veterans' agent. And Don said that some of them were new and he hadn't seen them, so he has more of this information. So if there are any veterans that are, have questions about any benefits or changes or anything new, please get in touch with Don downstairs, because he's got the latest info. Also there was various health groups. I left something on your desk, could I question something? The Life Care of Rainham was there, talking about not only long-term care at the facility, but they do in-home care and things like that. And I know a lot of people from Dayton use that facility. And the, the speakers talked about various tax-type things. They talked about the, those work programs that some communities have, that if you work a certain number of hours, you get a reduction in your taxes. The overall, from, I did get to see the senator before I left, and he said, in the morning, the attendance was very good. And the next time they do this, this is the first time in fifteen years they've done this, but he said they're thinking about doing it next year and having it probably from ten to two, because the hours were too long and most of the seniors were there when the door opened up.
Right.
They were there to get their information and I didn't see anyone giving flu shots or anything, but that could have been earlier in the day. But there was a lot of good information from various health agencies and organizations. And the council on aging from Taunton had some very good information that, that I will share with you later on. I've got samples of stuff. But I felt it was very worthwhile. There hasn't been anything like that, that size in this area for quite a while, so. And there was also some state agencies that were giving advice about elderly scams and what you need to be aware of and the kind of things you need to think about as you age and if you own securities. And again, all the scams involve identity theft. It seems like, as it said, the older you get, the more likely you are to be targeted. And they talked about the phone calls and all those other ransom deals to get money, so that was good. Now last.
I wanted to say, so the one that Brett announced is down in, on Friday, down in Middleborough.
Yes.
And so, if you can get down there, it sounds like it'd be a very worthwhile thing for.
I thought it was very good. I really did. They had refreshments and it was, there was plenty of room. And they had it, the middle of the room was set up like a, you would for a speaker and people could sit there and ask questions. And, and just as an aside, I did see people there from Dayton. And I just wanna say, Stella, happy eighty-ninth birthday. I saw her yesterday. She's a resident. She did say, I haven't seen her in years, and she said, today's my eighty-ninth birthday.
Well, happy birthday, Stella.
Happy birthday, Stella.
Okay, you also went to the DR advisory.
Last night, the DR financial advisory committee met with the superintendent, business manager. We had some school committee members there and we just quickly reviewed the preliminary FY nineteen budget. And this is very, very, very preliminary. What they presented was an eleven point nine nine percent increase, or almost a twelve percent increase, over the FY eighteen budget. But again, as Mr. Swatz pointed out, very, very preliminary. And the superintendent said that they have to obviously go back and sharpen the pencils. Like most municipal budgets, they only have fifty percent, if you will, discretion in this budget, because eighty-five percent of it is
predetermined.
collective bargaining. And they have contracts open also, so that's not like, at least ours, yeah. But fixed costs like insurance and utilities. And so they'll be looking at all of that. They're predicting an eight percent increase in medical insurance. They're with Maya. But again, they don't know that number. And everything is gonna be based on, what are you gonna get for state aid and the things we deal with. You never know.
Don't be too concerned with that, with that increase amount. You'll hear much more about that as we perform with the budget.
Exactly. So, I guess it lasted maybe, I don't know, hour and a half or so, but I think the next meeting is gonna be in February, somewhere around the fifteenth.
I have one report. Just prior to this meeting, we, we met, the Dayton School Building Committee met. And we're in the process of making projections on, particularly, most importantly, next year, because they're gonna need some additional classroom space at the elementary school and probably at the middle school. But our, our interest goes far beyond that. We wanna, we wanna project this out for several years so we can do some planning and then, and get down to that. So we're, we're gonna hopefully wrap our, our work up on the short-term part of this very shortly, probably, certainly by the end of February. So, anyway. Okay, we have acknowledgements?
No acknowledgements.
Approval admittance.
I think we should just take a moment and acknowledge Ms. Helen Cadlock.
Oh, yeah.
It's her birthday today. She's a.
Tomorrow. It's tomorrow, but this week.
But we did have a birthday celebration for her.
Oh, yeah, Helen, yeah.
Yeah, Helen, we just had cake. Helen, you're awesome. You do a fantastic job. I was just telling town administrator Ehrenstein today, she just, she focuses. I mean, she doesn't say a peep. She just, Helen, you're amazing and we appreciate all that you do.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Helen. Thank you very much for all you do. Okay, approval admittance.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of Friday, January fifth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Approval of warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant twenty-nine A dash eighteen in the amount of ninety thousand, thirty-four dollars and sixty cents payroll. And warrant twenty-nine B dash eighteen in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, four hundred, three dollars, forty-five cents. Accounts payable will be approved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's the end of the agenda. Any other public input?
When is the date for the food bank? We should announce that. I know it's not on here, but it's...
But we usually do have it on there.
The food bank is...
I haven't gotten a new list yet, enough to be...
Let me just see if I made it.
Oh, for the new year. I get what you're saying. We had a list, Selectmen Goulart, for the, through the end of the year, but we haven't got one for the...
I think I wrote it down.
Isn't it usually like the third Saturday?
Yeah.
And it's the same Saturday every month?
It is. The only time it changes is at Thanksgiving and Christmas, so.
So, is it this coming Saturday?
That would be the Saturday, yes.
Right.
If it's the third Saturday, like, and I'm correct.
Rather than give you a...
We can call the lions. Don't you a lion?
I am a lion. Rather than give you a date tonight, let's, let's get this, we'll get this, make sure we confirm it.
And I think it's, I think it's on the sign out front.
Yes, yeah.
It's somewhere. I, I, there's a post.
It's on the side, it's on the side.
Or on the one by the Board of Selectmen's Office. No. You're just going to ask us if you, after the meeting anyway, so.
We're trying to get to, we're trying to get to a thirty.
It's okay, you can ask questions, though.
Go for it.
Oh, do you remember before, it was a few meetings back, quite a few, I asked the question if I could get my hands on a spare copy of the MMA newsletter? And you would put one out on the table.
The beacon?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can just have mine there in my desk. I don't use it.
Yeah, I just like, I like to...
You can have it. You don't even need a copy. You can just keep it. I'll do you one better. Yeah, I'll give them to you after the meeting.
I just like to read up on it, because it's got a lot of good stuff in it.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, not a problem.
No, no, only one committee, only one committee. But we always have an article. We always have an article in there about our meeting, so that's true. But the other good thing about it is you get to see what other communities are doing around the state.
They have good statewide news, too. I like catching up on it.
Okay, anything else?
Mr. Higgins. No?
I'm entertaining motions.
So moved. Motion to adjourn, excuse me. You're having a motion for nothing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion, uh, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Cable.
You confused me. Thank you, Cable.